Okay, go ahead please.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. If we could, I think the first item is, I'll read the notice in regards to the COVID crisis we're facing right now. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Cuyahoga County Administration Building is closed for public meetings at this time. As a result, this meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with State of Ohio, House Bill 197. Interested persons may access the meeting via live stream by using the following YouTube link that should be up on your screen. Anything further needs to be added to that?
No.
Okay, all right, if we could, could I do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Boakes?
Here.
Mayor Brennan?
Here.
Councilperson Brown?
Here.
Mayor Byrne? Mr. Collier? Mr. Dever?
Here.
Mayor Disico?
Here.
He is here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, Mayor Gemala? Mayor Prosec?
Here.
Mayor Sellers? Councilperson Simon? You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to recall, have, in the past, have we excused the absence of those members that can't join us? Is that, is that something we should be doing? I'm gonna point to either Patrick or Annette.
We have not done that in the past, no.
Okay, so, let's not start, is that it? Okay, hopefully, hopefully they will be able to join us as the meeting goes on. So with that being said, there's the minutes from our October 8, 2020 meeting. That's, or, Annette, I'm sorry, I'm taking your limelight here, so if you want to read the next item on the agenda.
This is for the approval of the minutes of the October 8, 2020 meeting.
All right, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Mayor Boakes first?
And seconded by Councilwoman Brown. Is there any?
I think I made the motion and seconded my own motion, sorry about that.
Is there any comments or questions on the minutes from 2000, or October 8, 2020? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those against, that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business before us, Annette?
Um, no, we have no old business, but Councilperson Simon did join us.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome, Council.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business for discussion? Okay, we're gonna move.
Well, that's, Patrick, did you want to talk any new business?
No, there's not any new business.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay, then we'll just go to Patrick on item number five, the interim executives directors report. Thanks.
Sure thing, this will be relatively quick since we do have a pretty packed agenda. Thank you all for being here. Just a few items of note, we have a couple contracts that are being extended, the first one being the Community Confluence Plan, which we are managing on behalf of NOACA with the cities of Lakewood, Rocky River, and the Cleveland Metro Parks. That's being extended into the middle of 2021. Both of these extensions are to reflect some necessary changes as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The other being the Westlake Center Ridge Road Corridor Study will be extended to the end of 2021, like I, like I mentioned, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Cuyahoga County Greenways Partners, or Cuyahoga Greenways Partners Executive Meeting was held on November 12, 2020. It was hosted by Director Collier here. That meeting included executives of a variety of partner agencies as part of the Cuyahoga Greenways Partners and covered a host of different items that various groups are doing. We're hoping that we'll give a more in-depth overview of some of the outcomes of that pretty extensive meeting. One item that I did want to pull up as part of our meeting today was that there's a new webpage hosted by county planning, www.cuyahogagreenways.com, which is on our website and provides access to a map of all of the existing and, in many cases, proposed trails throughout Cuyahoga Counties. We're pretty excited about that website, so that's now available. One other update, the Lakefront Public Access Plan. As a regional plan, this one is pretty important and there are a number of folks on our call today whose cities are impacted. So we're, have, we have interviews underway with local, regional, and state-level stakeholders talking about that plan and improving public access and transportation along the lake. We are looking forward to a property owner survey that will go out later this month into early January, and our first public meetings anticipated in January for that plan. A brief budget update, the 2021 budget update was passed by county council. Planning Commission's 2021 budget has not changed from the originally approved 2020 and 2021 budget, except for a small increase in personnel services. So that's exciting for us to be able to have a restored budget for 2021. We anticipate a full financial report for 2020 in an upcoming board meeting as we close out this year. Also included in your packet was the 2021 meeting schedule. The 2021 organizational meeting has been scheduled for February 11, 2021. We do have a January meeting, but that is tentatively scheduled at this time. Final item on this list is a thank you to our very own Blake Woodruff. Blake ended his second co-op with county planning, or will be ending it next Friday on December 18. Unfortunately, he was not able to join us at today's meeting. You would recognize him because he was previously employed by county planning in the spring of 2020. We were very appreciative of him joining us again for this semester, and his work was greatly appreciated, and you'll see it in the number of plans that have been produced over the course of the last semester. One final item not on the list, we have two members whose terms are coming up at the end of 2021, Mayor Brennan and Mayor Sellers' terms are ending at the end of, excuse me, at the end of 2020. We are working with county council and the county executive, the county executive to get nominations that will then be sent to county council for those two seats. That is the end of my report.
And Mayor Sellers has joined us.
Oh, welcome, Mayor Sellers, thank you. So, Patrick, thanks for that report. In regards to the, the co-op, is the intent to, to be looking for co-ops once again this year?
We have identified another co-op for the winter semester and have made an offer to that person who will hopefully accept that, and we'll be having one intern for winter. Typically, we have two. At this point, we're trying to work with some folks who have some knowledge of county planning in order to make a pretty smooth transition to a strictly virtual co-op program.
Okay, all right, that sounds great. Is there any other further comments or questions on Patrick's report today? Okay, all right, well, I appreciate that, Patrick, thanks so much. So if we go back to the agenda again, I, we put on the agenda here today for an executive session to discuss the appointment of a executive director. So if there is no objections, I would like to call a motion to do that, and if there's a second, and then I'm sure we need to do a roll call.
A second.
Mayor Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, roll call. Mayor Boakes?
Yes.
Mayor Brennan?
Yes.
Councilperson Brown?
He's there, she may be on mute.
I think I got a little delay. I'm a yes.
Okay, Mr. Collier? Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mayor Prosec?
Yes.
Mayor Sellers?
Yes.
Councilperson Simon?
Yes.
And that was a yes for Mr. Collier? During executive session.
Okay, thanks. And then Kevin, will you be able to escort us into that chat session?
So the breakout room is all ready to go, and I will open the room and you should be sent there automatically. When you're done there, all you need to do is click the exit room button, the bottom right.
Okay.
Here goes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kevin, did you get Mayor Prosec in there as well?
It looks like everybody has joined the breakout room except for Mayor Prosec and Councilwoman Brown. There we go. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay, we're coming back, we're coming back. I think we have a few, few people that are still out, but we're, we're coming back from executive session. See, one, two, three.
Are you gonna want to take another roll call?
Understood. Are we still missing one more person? I don't know why I keep thinking we're missing one.
Sunny has not rejoined us yet, Councilwoman.
That's right. Thanks, Kevin.
I closed the breakout room and it will automatically send her back here in about thirty seconds.
Okay, that's great. There you go. There you go. All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to come out of executive session now. Can I have a second, please?
Second, Brown.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If you could, Annette, do a roll call on this.
Mayor Bobst. Mayor Bobst.
You're on mute, Mayor Bobst.
There it is. Sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Mayor Brennan?
Yes.
Councilperson Brown? Mr. Collier?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mayor Prosek?
Yes.
Mayor Sellers?
Yes.
Councilperson Simon?
Yes.
Did I miss anyone? We're back out of executive session.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you, Annette. I appreciate that. So the next item on our agenda is to vote for the approval of the appointment of the executive director. So before we start that process or for discussion, we just met in executive session and I, I'd like to give a brief overview. So over the last four, six months, actually, the County Planning Commission has been reviewing potential candidates for this position. We were fortunate enough to have well over a dozen candidates apply for it and ultimately, we narrowed it down to three candidates. And just recently, within the last month here, we have a recommended candidate. Person's name is Mary Serby. Mary currently works with Team Neo. She has an extensive background in planning here in the region and we're very fortunate to have her agree to come with us in here and join as the executive director of the Planning Commission. I would like to thank first my interview committee, which included Mayor Bobst, Mayor Brennan, and Mayor Summer, or Mayor Sellers, I'm sorry, Mayor, and then also Councilwoman Simon for the work they did over the last four or five months now on reviewing the candidates. I think we're very fortunate to have so many skilled and talented people in the, in the region here that showed an interest in this job. And I personally want to thank Patrick Hewitt, who had stepped up in as the interim director for us over the last six months here and has done a really great job. And we, we envision some great things with Patrick in the very near future. So with that being said, I'm going to make a motion on item number eight is to approve the appointment of the executive director, Mary Serby, for the position. And there is a resolution on the agenda today and I'd like to insert the name of Mary Serby where it's applicable. And so there's a motion out there to do that. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
There, thank you, Mayor Brennan. Appreciate that. So with that, I will give an opportunity for my colleagues, if any of them have a comment to make in regards to Ms. Serby's appointment.
I'll jump in.
Go ahead, Chantel. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just would like to welcome and thank her for, for joining the team. And I, while I was not a part of the interview committee, I have heard nothing but wonderful things and think she will be a tremendous asset to the commission. So I just wanted to welcome, welcome her aboard and thank her for joining the team.
Standing. Thank you. Councilwoman Simon?
Sure, thank you. I just really look forward to working with our new director and really have a lot of great hopes of where we're going to be able to take the Planning Commission and the county. So yeah, looking forward to this new, new day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, so with that being said, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Brennan, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Just want to also speak in support of the, of the motion and, and of Mary Serby and that we're looking forward to working with her. This has been quite a process and, and welcome to getting the, to the real work here of the commission with her. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so on the motion to insert the name of Mary Serby as the appointment for the executive director of the County Planning Commission, on the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? I have all ayes. Okay, that motion carries. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. I know Mary, I think, is on the call here. I think she may be caller in, use, call in user number one. Mary, are you out there? If you're on mute, I think. Okay, that's all right. So unfortunately, I think she's trying to, to chime in here, but she's not getting through. So I've had frequent discussions with her. She's very excited. She's looking to start on the week of January 11th. And so we look forward to working with her in the very near future. Is there any other comments?
I'm in now. Sorry about that. Yeah, I had to be unmuted from the system. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dever. And thank you to the selection committee and to all the board. I'm really honored and I'm really excited about this position as the executive director and look forward to really advancing the mission of the County Planning Commission alongside all of you. So thank you to your commitment to the Planning Commission and to the future success of Cuyahoga County. So, thank you. Really excited.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mary. Really appreciate it and look forward to working with you in the near future. Okay, I appreciate the board's patience through that whole thing and, and we look forward to working with Mary in the near future. Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. I'm not sure of Annette or Kevin. Did we have any comments that come in in regards to, or public comments?
Did we vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah. Annette, was there any public comment?
We had no, we have no public comment.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Okay, so with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can go into the next meeting with Diane Bickin and the Solid Waste Board. Is there any objections to that? Okay, so I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you. So the next item is to go into the next meeting. I appreciate that. So this is the Solid Waste Policy Committee and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. So could I have a roll call, please, Annette? You're on mute.
Okay, I'm looking for the time as all. 3:07. Roll call for the Solid Waste Committee meeting is Mayor Bobst.
Here.
Mayor Brennan?
Here.
Councilperson Brown?
Here.
Mayor Byrne? Mr. Collier?
Here.
Mr. Dever?
Here.
Mayor Disico? Mayor Gemella? Mayor Prosek?
Here.
Mayor Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilperson Simon?
Here.
Mr. Mathias?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, that's great. So thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 11th, 2020 meeting. Can I have a, a motion to accept those minutes?
I move around.
Second Sellers, second Sellers.
Sellers. There you go. On that motion, is there any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so next we'll go to the Solid Waste Planning Updates. I see Director Diane Bickin is with us. So Diane, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. So we have just a few updates for you today. We have not met since June 11th, so just want to update you on some solid waste district business. I'd like to start with Jessica Phinos. She is also on the call today to do our planning updates. Jessica?
Okay. So, since the last time we met, the, the district has submitted the 2019 Annual District Report to the Ohio EPA. And that was done on June 25th. And the Ohio EPA did their review, just within the last couple of weeks of, of that report and of our program updates, and they finalized our recycling and disposal tonnages. They didn't have any comments and that just means that the district is, we're compliant with our plan update. So, so I wanted to share with you the finalized 2019 recycling percentages for the district, which is 25.19% for the residential commercial sector. And if you remember, the goal for us for the residential commercial sector is 25. And 70, almost 77% for the industrial sector. And 66 was the, is the goal for that. And so overall, we, we recycled approximately 48% of our waste that was generated in 2019. And we'll be starting to survey again for the 2020 numbers, the first part of the year. And that's probably gonna be pretty challenging with a lot of the businesses being closed down due to the pandemic. So we'll see how, see if we'll be able to meet that, the goals that, that they have in place for us. So we'll have more updates probably over the next couple of months. The next thing was, so about the model multi-family housing ordinance. One of the priorities that we identified in our new plan update was to provide programs and services that would assist the communities with expanding their recycling opportunities for the residents that live in multi-family housing. One of the initiatives that we had in the plan implementation was to, to, to create a model ordinance requiring multi-family recycling. And the district developed a draft model ordinance that the communities can adopt that would require the owners or management agents of multi-family properties to provide a recycling program to their, for their tenants. Some of the requirements in the ordinance are for the citing of containers, storage, collection, and removal, removal of recyclable materials. And also, of course, education guidelines. And I think, I believe Diane was going to provide a PDF of that for your review. If you have any feedback, we would, of course, like to, like to get any feedback from, from you. So, and last, just to, a reminder that, that we have, that we maintain a spreadsheet with all the solid waste management and recycling contract information for all 59 communities in Cuyahoga County. We update that regularly as changes in contracts or their programs occur. So we used to have a link to that on our website, but there's, things are changing so frequently. It's just, it's easier if you wanted to have a copy of that or needed information about any of the other community contracts, get in touch with me, email or call, and we can provide that to you. And I believe that is it.
Okay, thanks, Jessica. One note about the multi-family ordinance. Would love it if any of the mayors on the policy committee would take a look at that and see if, it's still in draft form. But our, our goal is to have more pressure on the property managers to implement recycling in areas that cities don't serve. So that's apartment buildings and condos and things. So it's an opportunity to, you know, for the district to work with those multi-family properties and also for the cities to increase their residential recycling rate. So I'll be sending that out after the meeting today along with a copy of our report. So let me know if you have any comments. Okay, so moving on to Solid Waste District Report and some announcements. Since June, we've implemented a few new programs. We have taken all of our public education activities online, including our Master Recycler Course, which we changed to be called the Recycling Ambassador Course. And that course is a shorter version of our And that course is a shorter version of our Master Recycler, but the goal is the same, is to train local community advocates for recycling that could answer their neighbors' questions. So that course is, we completed our first one in the fall. We have another one coming up in January. It's hosted by Karen Miller, the district's education specialist. And it consists of four weekly Zoom classes that meet once a week. And then there will be quarterly follow-up meetings and hopefully after COVID is over, those will include facility tours of recycling facilities, special speakers and that sort of thing. We had 20 participants in the first course. Each of the, if you can see this, each of the participants will get this little yard sign. It's kind of, you know, you're familiar with the pick-up poop sign that the sewer district sends out. This is our version. It says, "I'm a recycling ambassador. Ask me a question." So we hope to offer that again several times a year. And we're also working on a city version of that. So what we would like to do is have a kind of a shorter version of the Recycling Ambassador Course available to city service secretaries, anyone who has an interface with the public that might have to answer residents' recycling questions to kind of train them on what those answers are. So we're constantly evolving our services to the public, especially with COVID. We've had to really pivot and try to stay relevant. So. Next thing, we, new program we offered last fall on Halloween was a TV recycling event. We worked with a company called Regency Technologies and we had 60 people deliver 79 televisions, keeping about 5,000 pounds of leaded glass out of the landfill. So the reason we decided to offer television recycling is because due to COVID, the retail outlets like Best Buy that were taking TVs for a fee stopped. So we moved in to fill that gap. We charged 20 bucks a television and it was very well received. We just had people bring them in sort of on a drive-through basis on a Saturday morning on Halloween. And in return, they got a reusable shopping bag and some Halloween candy. So it was, it was good. So we hope to do that again on March 13th and, you know, let your residents know, you know, that they can participate in that. The other program we began this year was a latex paint recycling program. As the mayors know, we, the district does not accept latex paint as part of its household hazardous waste program because it's non-hazardous. So we've always instructed folks to just dry it out and throw it out. However, there is a company called American Paint Recycling out of Van Wirt, Ohio. And our new recycling programs coordinator, Matt Walters, has arranged for them to come up here sort of on a milk run basis to collect any latex paint the cities do get from the residents. And we've had, I think, 17 cities sign up so far. We had the first shipment go out. It was 11,000 pounds of latex paint. The interesting thing about that program is they take it back to their facility and they blend it into what they call ecotone paint, which is sold at the Habitat for Humanity restores. So rather than sending that material to landfill, that can get recycled and out back into the community. So not sure any of the policy committee communities signed up to participate, but if you want more information, just give me a call and we'll, we'll get you that information. The goal with this is not to really promote that residents bring in their latex paint, but we know that cities still get it anyway. So it's to help the cities manage the stuff that's coming in. The 2021 Community Recycling Awareness Grant is available for cities to complete now. Copies went out, I think, a few weeks ago to the, the mayors and service directors. Applications are being accepted through February 1st. Cities can apply for a grant up to $6,000 for recycling awareness and special waste collections. This year, we added a new special project grant. So if cities have some type of a special project in mind that they would need additional funding for, we have an opportunity for them to apply for that. One example is that we are, plan to fund, the city of Brooklyn wants to do a cart tagging program, which would send paid staff out into the community to look at all the recycling containers and tag all the non-compliant ones. So that type of hands-on education is really shown through research to be the most effective in terms of getting people to do the right thing and learn what should not be in their bins. So we're looking forward to launching that this year with some extra funds. And any questions up until, any questions, anything so far?
Oh, really? Thanks, Diane. You guys are really doing an amazing job over there. So, and I'm, I'm very happy to be able to serve on the, on the board also. So I appreciated the hard work you guys do. And for those of you that don't know, and I don't know if this is something you already brought up, Diane, but Diane has announced that she will be retiring and it's unfortunate to us that she's deciding to go this path. But I think she has a lot of opportunities ahead of her yet. So we probably won't cross paths with her in this committee into the near future. I think her timeline now is sometime in first, second quarter of, of next year. So we've got a lot of work to do to try and find somebody to replace, you know, really a great person like Diane.
Yeah, thank you so much. That was going to be my next announcement, so I didn't have to say that. But I, I started working at the district on March 12th, 1990. So it'll be 31 years come the spring. So I let my board members know that I plan to retire from the district, but not to necessarily retire. I still want to stay involved in some, some way. I don't know what that looks like yet. But we have the job posted on our website and I'll be, I'll stay as long as I need, you know, as long as my board needs me to, to transition and bring someone new on and trained. So probably will, I'm sure I will see you all again next, you know, next meeting in February. And looking to retire from the district sometime next spring.
Once again, thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments or questions in regards to, you know, the report that came out today from the policy committee or Diane's news?
I just want to congratulate Diane. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Diane, can you come out to Rocky River and help me with automated refuse collection?
Diane got me started some years ago. I said, Diane, I was like, I hate, well, I hate to lose you, Doug. I like, you got me this far.
Yeah, thank you. And, and Mayor Boebst, yeah, it was, it was a pleasure to work with you, Mayor Sellers, on, you know, transitioning your program in Warrensville Heights. And Pam, you know, I'll be here for several more months yet, so give me a call.
I will, I will.
Maybe my last project will be Rocky River.
Well, there you go. There's, finally. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any other comments or questions or anything else we need to cover within the policy committee?
I'd like an opportunity to make a comment.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mathias.
First, I'd like to thank Diane for offering me the opportunity to represent the industrial sector. Gosh, I don't know what, four years ago it seemed. I don't know. It seems like a long time ago. I've really enjoyed my time here. I've enjoyed working with Diane and the rest of the team. One thing I should make you all aware is I don't work for Arsenal in Little USA anymore. I now work for Cleveland Cliffs. So Cliffs completed the acquisition of AMUSA. It closed yesterday. That's right. As of right now, I'm still a solid waste guy. I suspect I will continue to be. One thing I will need to do is let the new management team know of my role here and make sure they want me to continue in this role. I suspect Cliffs is very engaged in community outreach. I, again, do not see that as an issue. But I'll talk with Diane and, you know, just communicate. I, I think it's pro forma as far as I'm concerned. But, I mean, I'm one day into my new company, so that's all I can say right now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Appreciate it. And the best of lucks with, with Cleveland Cliffs. It's a, it's a very proud company here in the city too. So we're very, we're excited with that transition. At least I am. Diane, did you, sorry. Diane, did you have a further comment?
No, I thank you, Carrie, for letting us know that. I, I hope that you'll be able to continue on with us. Your input's very helpful. One of the things that, just a side note here, that Ohio EPA, when they updated the state solid waste management plan, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica, if it was the state plan or the, the requirements, but they, they no longer are going to require districts to meet an industrial goal for, for recycling. They took that out of the state plan. But we will continue to do some serving to the industrial sector and still provide services to the industrial sector. So I think it's important to still have Carrie or someone in that capacity serve on the policy committee going forward still.
Okay, is there anything further that we need to cover in the policy committee? Nothing further on the agenda? Okay, if there's nothing further, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the, the committee. Is that, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Sellers. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that motion passes. So thank you, everyone, and have a safe holiday.
You too.
You too. Happy holidays, everyone.
Take care.
You will.
Stay safe.
Take care.
Bye-bye.